Good evening, sorry we're a few minutes late. We've been in session, we have a quorum, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I believe we're starting with student perspectives. North High School.
Good evening, my name is Mark Mirandola and I am the Director of Student Activities at North High School. It is a pleasure to introduce and recognize our students and sponsor associated with Direct Action. For as long as I can remember, this group has been committed to service at North High School. Perhaps the most recognizable event they organize is our annual Giving Tree. This impacts countless people every year. And while this group asks for nothing in return for their service, I think it's time to publicly recognize their good deeds. That's why I'd like to introduce you to the three students involved with Direct Action.
Hi, I'm Anserun Hassan, I'm a senior at Downers Grove North. An overview of Direct Action. Direct Action is a community-based service club at DGN. And every year we host Giving Tree where we adopt the families and have the whole school donate gifts in order to take, to distribute out. Direct Action also does many other events, always depending on what the community needs and what the members themselves are passionate for. One of our members wanted to help out in the Humane Society, so we spent a couple of the meetings making dock toys. And we've also done the food pantry and we collect Halloween candy. We always help out at the elementary school fun fairs and the fun runs, anything in our community that needs help, we are always there to lend a hand. And everyone always reaches out to Ms. Minglesdorf, Mrs. Brown, and says that they need volunteers. And thankfully, someone's always there to step up and help out whenever the community needs it.
Hi, my name is William Norick, I am a sophomore at Downers Grove North. Each year for the past 22 years, Direct Action has adopted families from the humanitarian service project. And classes, teams, teammates, or individuals could adopt these families and get gifts for them, for families that aren't fortunate or can't afford presents for Christmas. And this year we were also able to make a donation to the humanitarian service project because our choir raised too much money, so...
Hello, my name is Christopher Espinoza, I'm a senior at Downers Grove North. Saturday we all arrived, there was about, a group of about 10 of us, and we arrived at school at 8 o'clock in the morning. And we moved all the toys that we'd collected from the College and Career Center to the bus and we took it to Carol Stream. Some of us were assigned to load it into the truck once they were checked in, others were assigned to unwrap the toys, or rewrap the toys that were damaged or unwrapped, and then assign them to different locations. We took about three hours, I think. And it was just, it's a rewarding experience to know that like you're doing something that helps out a larger community of people.
Well, I'd like to say something. You know, tonight's pretty exciting because we are really celebrating some of the best of our students. And I don't know that there's any greater gift than that of service. And in our society and at a time, I'm getting choked up, sorry. In our society and at a time when people are really needing, especially the most vulnerable of people, I just really commend you and your group and say thank you for the community, for each of us. You are a wonderful representative and, you know, don't lose this passion throughout your life because it's a really wonderful thing to have. Okay, we have student board member questions and comments. Since we've just head north, we'll start with Simone.
Do you want to... So, Simone lost her voice, so she won't be able to cough.
I have known this girl for many years, this is the first time she's ever lost her voice.
But something that has happened at North that shows a big part of success at our school is the cross-country team. They got fourth at Nationals and from last year until now, that's definitely something like really big that the whole school is like very proud of them to accomplish, so that's pretty much one of like big highlights from our school.
Congratulations to them.
Congratulations. Not that you actually did it yourself.
Congratulations to them.
That is great. Anything else you want to add to that? Okay. But I think we're moving on to the recognition of the National Merit Semi-finalists and Committed Students.
Ed's going to get us started here. Good evening, everyone, welcome to South High School. For our visitors from North High, if you don't know me, my name is Ed Schwartz and it is my honor and privilege to serve as the principal of this school. Our school board, as a little background here, are seven volunteers who give of their time to represent our community in this, in our schools. They're charged with upholding the mission of our schools and they put into place all of the systems that allow us to do great things for kids. Unlike Ms. Schwartz and I, they don't always get the opportunity to recognize students and see the great things like we do on a daily basis. So this evening is their opportunity to acknowledge some of our best and brightest. Specifically, we're here to recognize students being honored by the National Merit Program. As we proceed through the recognition program, we're going to ask that all of the students when recognized move to my right and position yourselves along this half-wall. Then, as Ms. Schwartz and I call your name, please come across the cafeteria floor to receive your certificate and be recognized by members of the Board of Education. We also ask that the family members that are here tonight with our students stand and be recognized. It does not go unnoticed to us, your contributions in their success, and we would like to recognize you as well. We will begin with the South High students who are identified as National Merit Committed Students. Please come forward. As they proceed up here, I'll explain, the National Merit Competition begins in the fall of junior year when students take the preliminary SAT exam, which is the qualifying exam for the National Merit Recognition. In the fall of their senior year, students are informed of their status as National Merit Semi-finalists or Committed Students, or one of two other recognitions, National Achievement Scholar or National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar. Committed Scholars are those students who scored in the top 5% of all students who took the PSAT in the fall of their junior year. These students are among 34,000 Committed Students nationwide who achieve this level of achievement out of more than 1.6 million students who took the exam. This year, South High is proud to have six Committed Students. First, Mark Alvarez.
Congratulations.
Ian Bales, I do not see Ian here tonight, but we will congratulate him nonetheless. Akil Ghosh. Congratulations to all the South High Honorees.
Okay, well then, North High students who are identified as National Merit Committed Students, please come forward and line up as well over here. And for those of you who do not know me, my name is Janice Schwartz and I am the principal of North High. No relation however to the principal of South High, even though that is the common question that I get asked. Okay, so we have some students that are missing, but I'm going to also go ahead and call their names. Not here is Asayed or Ali Amin, we'll give him a round of applause anyway. Nick Arndt. Alis Bida is not here, but we'll give her a round of applause. Okay, and I have a whole bunch, I'm going to read that aren't here that are in alphabetical order here, so I have Patrick Doyle, Matt Lee, Sydney Lee, Kaylee McCarthy, and Kaylee Nelson. And I'm going to go ahead and add in Charles Tenorio. None of them are here tonight, but we'll give them a round of applause. And will our North High students who are identified as National Merit Semi-finalists, please come forward. So National Merit Semi-finalists are those students who scored in the top half of 1% of all of the students who took the PSAT test last fall. So they are one, well, three of only 16,000 students out of the 1.6 million students who took this test nationwide. Semi-finalists are eligible to move forward in the competition for National Merit Scholarships. National Merit Finalists are selected from the semi-finalists and will be announced in early January, or early 2018, so January or February. So as you can see, we have three finalists. First, we have Chris Bull. Our second semi-finalist is John Cagni. And our third finalist is Miles Christensen, who is suffering probably from jet lag because he just got back from Portland where he was one of our cross-country runners that you heard about earlier tonight. How about one more round of applause for all of our award winners tonight? And so at this time, we're going to take a brief break in our meeting and we're going to convene in the cafeteria right behind me for some refreshments and it'll be an opportunity for you to take some pictures if you would like as well.
Okay, thank you for celebrating with us if you went out in return. Do you know, do you want to talk about the 2018-19 curriculum proposal?
Yes, thank you. So we're very excited, we have a course proposal from Fine Arts and the board may recall that, that we haven't had one out of Fine Arts for several years now, so we're very excited about that. We also have a name change, or a request for a title change coming of our, out of our PE department. So I'll take a few minutes just to talk about the name change and then Glenn Williams will come up and talk about the Fine Arts proposal for Rock Band. We currently have a course that's taught at South High School known as Advanced Skill Sports, or Individual Skill Sports. And that course typically, we just have one section. Primarily, that course focuses on gymnastics and tumbling. But with the title that we have, Advanced Individual Skill Sports, sometimes students don't realize it. As much as we put that information in our epidemic planning guide, as much as teachers talk to students about that, we feel that the name doesn't really describe the content of the course. So we would like the title to be more descriptive of the content of the actual course. So we are recommending that, oops, sorry, we are recommending that we change the title to Gymnastics, Tumbling, and Fitness. We do not believe that this will in any way impact students negatively. If anything, we may have some students that sign up for it because they now know what the content is. It is possible, and we acknowledge that it could work the opposite, so there could be an increase in enrollment, there could be a decrease. But we believe it's important for students to truly understand what the content of the course is and make decisions on the courses that they would like to take in PE based on a full understanding of the course content. So we are proposing that we change the name of Advanced Individual Skill Sports to Gymnastics, Tumbling, and Fitness. Are there any questions specific to that before we move on to Rock Band?
Looks like no. Okay.
With that, I will hand off to Glenn Williams.
Good evening, I'm Glenn Williams and I teach music and I'm the Fine Arts Chair at South High School. I extend to you the warmest greetings from my colleague and friend Brer, who's in the thick of the Mosaic Tech rehearsal right now. And shameless plug, one at 5:30, one at 8 o'clock tomorrow at North High School. You won't want to miss it.
Tickets still available for board members.
That's right. So I want to answer the question first, why this course and why right now. Traditionally, music education in America has been confined to the 10% of the students who are fortunate enough to have band, choir, or orchestra as part of their middle school experience. We in District 99 are among the elite nationally in that we already offer some non-performance courses. We offer guitar courses, we offer digital music, we offer pop music styles, and we offer AP Music Theory. So we're able to connect with students who aren't, when they get to high school, in band, choir, or orchestra, but not to the extent we think we're capable of or would like to do. Nationally, there's a trend in thinking right now that's demonstrative of a long-term debate in music education. How do we break away from exclusively Western European music and teach all music to all people? So when Brer, as the state president of the ILMEA, went to Washington DC this summer, he was really enlightened by the number of states that are thinking or considering proposals like this. And we're actually fortunate to be, I think, out in the forefront a little bit trying to create courses that connect with all students, especially those not in band, choir, or orchestra. We have a fundamental philosophical belief that all human beings are musicians. Not everybody is a performer, but everybody's a musician. So to that extent, we strive to connect with students to the, our greatest opportunity. So it's an opportunity for those students who aren't in the traditional band, choir, and orchestra, and that's about 10% of our student population. It will be mostly students who play guitar, piano, bass, drums, and are singers. So it's the new trend in music performance, rather than being instrumentation-driven, it's kind of eclectic-driven. So if you think about Snarky Puppy or groups like that, it's driven, the music is driven by the musicians in the ensemble, not by the instrumentation. And so we kind of hope and see student groups who emerge patterned after that. This course will focus on developing individual performance proficiency, so we'll strive to find the students where they are in the learning continuum and move them ahead to make them better artists. And the skill development will be mostly on guitar, bass, drums, keyboard, or voice. I could teach all of those except there's a visual element to rock and roll, so I'm disqualified from the class immediately in that regard. The curriculum also addresses the national core art standards which have been adopted by the ISBE in terms of creating, performing, and responding to music. We will connect and be in sync with those newly adopted standards. The course is a full course that meets one year for a Fine Arts credit. It's a 9th through 12th grade course, it fulfills the Fine Arts graduation requirement. There's no prerequisite or co-requisite, but there will be an interview slash audition. There needs to be a baseline level of proficiency. So we're kind of harboring a belief that there's students who are doing a lot of playing, not in our classrooms, and we're working to identify, find them, and draw them in, and coach them, and give them a music experience here in District 99. So are there any questions I can answer about this?
How many sections do you envision of this class at both North and South?
We're anticipating one section each, around 24 students.
Wow, cool.
And we'll have to schedule it well because we'll need multiple rooms to make this happen with the equipment, so we'll schedule it at a time where the equipment and the facilities are available to make this happen.
Yeah, I think this is a great class, I think you're going to get more than 24 looking to sign up.
Well, if there's more than 24 bass players in South right now, and I don't know about it, I'm not doing my job well.
My son does this through GarageBand. So he's been, he's done it every winter for the last four or five years.
Great.
So, he just signed up, he's doing it again now, for the winter session, it's a 10-week session, so I know. He'll be a senior next year.
And that's what we're hoping, those are the students we're hoping to identify, that's great to hear.
They're out there. So I think this is a good...
Great.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, great, I'm surprised, no offense, it took so long to get here.
Yeah, you know, sometimes enlightenment happens in different phases.
Anything else? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for your consideration, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet.
2018-19 staffing ratio?
I'm going to turn this one over to Pete.
It's nice to have you. Let me just click it.
All right, well while we're working on that, this is the first of several times that we'll talk about FTE for the 2018-2019 school year. Tonight, we're giving you some preliminary information. We would be looking for an action item at the January 29th Board Meeting, and then we would work on the below-the-line and all the rest of the positions at the February 26th Board Meeting. So this is the one where we kind of give you an early update on what the enrollment looks like in comparison to the Casarda enrollment figures. As a reminder, last year we commissioned the demographer, Robert Casarda, to do another study of District 99, so this is information that we received last December. His projections for the 2018-19 school year are for 4,917 students district-wide. Currently, as we look in our system for our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, plus the incoming ninth graders, we see a number of 5,033. So we're about 116 students above his projection at this point, roughly, you know, low over 2% greater. But this is also fairly early, and so some students may go to private schools, some students may transfer. Again, this is an early look at it and we'll have better numbers for you when we get to the January 29th Board Meeting. For the last...
Question.
Question. Sorry.
For the last seven years, we've been using a student-teacher ratio of 21.8 to 1. Currently, with the numbers being as close as they are to the Casarda enrollment, our initial look at this says that we would consider, continue, bless you, with the 21.8 to 1 ratio, this would give us a FTE of 225.6 district-wide, which is .4 less than what we currently have this year for our, what we call above-the-line FTE enrollment. In this document, when you get to Section 3, you can see there are a lot of X's there. This is where, on January 22nd, which is like the second day, I'm sorry, the 10th day of second semester, we look more closely at the enrollment expected in the two buildings and we make some suggestions about how to divide up the 225.6. So it's too early to give you those numbers, we will fill those in for you for the January 29th Board Meeting. But the number that we would end up with as the total would still be the 225.6. You can see if we go just by Casarda, right now, North would have 100.6 and South would have 125. The last couple of years, the enrollment at North has been a little higher than what Casarda has predicted, and the enrollment at South has been a little less. And we'll just have to see where we are on that 10th day of second semester. And then, as always, we will be bringing you the recommendations for special ed, ELL, and other special programs to that February 26th Board Meeting. So this is just early information for you. And next month, we'll have greater detail and ask for you to take action on the staffing ratio. Any questions?
Thanks.
Go ahead.
For the next portion, which, I'm sorry, you were going to say, the next portion?
The next portion.
Next portion, Master Facility Plan, Community Engagement Update. I'm going to just give you a little brief update, which I have in the notebook behind Helps if you have the right set of notes. So what I'm going to do is just provide an update of where we're at up until this point with the Master Facility Plan, at which point we'll have our consultants that have done both a scientific phone poll and tallied the results of the mail survey. They're going to come up and present, and we're going to go out to the audience so you can, you don't have to look over your shoulder to watch the presentation. And then we'll come back up and I'll provide kind of where I see that we're at at this point, so we can have a discussion of if the board is interested in any further action, if so, what that might be. So just a reminder for everybody, what we've done to this point. So from 2011 to 2016, emerging from our strategic plan process, the district administration in cooperation with the larger teaching staff and all staff, students and parents and community members, built a plan designed to meet the current and future needs of our students. Emerging from that came some key themes that are needs across the district, including safety and security, accessibility, modern learning spaces, air conditioning, equity across both campuses, and learning commons. What this has been commonly seen as over the last several years as we've looked at this, with the knowledge that bonds are expiring, is an opportunity for the community to reinvest in the physical buildings and prepare them to be available and appropriate for our students for the next couple of decades. Last year, the board saw the full plan that outlined all of our needs and asked the administration to go to the community through a community engagement process to both inform and then survey the community about how they felt about the project as a whole and different components inside of that. Tonight, you will hear the results of those surveys. To prepare the community, we started informational meetings last spring, with several of them last April. And then out of that, we formed a Citizens Task Force that met four times this fall to look at the plan, to fully understand it, and then to look at the data that you'll see in just a few minutes. We also sent out three informational mailings to every single household in the district. That's 44,000 households received three separate informational mailings, including... That's 44,000 households received three separate informational mailings, including print details about the rationale and the components of the plan, and artistic renderings provided by our architect. We also held four community meetings, two at each school, to provide anybody who wanted to show up and get a full detailed presentation from me, and they got to listen to me for an hour and a half, I'm sure that was delightful for all that attended. Following that, all of that information going out to the community, that's when we sent out the mail surveys and then conducted the scientific phone polls. So, at this point, I'm going to have the board and administration go out into the audience, and we'll trade places with Jim and Paul, who will come up and introduce themselves and provide us the information and results.
Good evening. My name is Paul Handley, Senior Vice President of George V. Bond Company, and I worked on your voting policy process up until today. There's one last thing we're gonna do, which is a follow-up letter to inform the community as to where you are in the planning process, that's kind of the last step. But today, I'm gonna present the results of the mail survey. Hopefully, most of you received this. It was a survey plus a fact sheet, and it was half information, half questions. Some of the questions were open-ended. This was my disclaimer, saying that a mail survey really provides a general undertow of the electorate, it's not a scientific survey, the line what Jim's gonna talk about tonight, but it definitely gives you a good feeling of what voters are thinking. So, we mailed to 44,000 households, we expected a response rate of 8 to 17%. We had 4,077 reply, which was 9.3%, and again, not a scientific poll, not a predictor of a ballot measure of success or failure, but it does provide a general undertow of the electorate. And so, who responded in terms of age? And so, the first column, where you say survey respondents, that's the breakdown. And the reason that I have some, like, 14% agreeing, the 19% agreeing versus the 21% and 14% in red, is that when we start looking at turnout for a primary, we have data up there for 2010, 14, and 16 primaries. If you look at the data, it seems as though those responding to the mail survey, there were more 35 to 54-year-olds than there probably should be. And then, as far as 65 and up, it seems like there were not enough mail surveys that were in that age range. As far as gender, 53% female, 39% male. It's very common to have more females participate in a mail survey, for whatever reason, every time you do a survey throughout the country, you typically see more females responding. At the same time, I looked at all active voters in your community, and 47% are male, 53% are female. The report says both male and female responded, so on their own, they drew a little check mark and said, "We both responded," because this was sent to the household. So, it was not sent to every individual voter, it was sent to every household. And so, they indicated that both in the household were responding. And so, the data is not far off in terms of having 53% female, if you look at the 2016 primary, 2014 primary. A child attending District 99 school, so 10, almost 11%, North High, 11.5% South High, and then the Transition 99 Center, less than 1%, and 77% no response. District employee, 3%. Community of residents, dominated by Downers Grove and Woodbridge. Bowling Brook had a whopping 1 responded. And you're gonna have to zoom back out at this one. And so, one of the most important questions you can ask in a scientific phone poll or a mail survey is rate the district or grade the public institution. And the reason that it's important is because it is a signal of trusted institution, and trusted institution has a direct impact in how a board will vote. And so, typically, A and B voters, particularly guest votes, CD and out voters are often tied to no vote. We see that strong positive correlation. And so, what I like is you get really strong marks. If you look at the bottom, where it has District 99, to the left of that says Gallup 2015, that 2015 number is the most recent national data that I could find where they do as a scientific phone poll nationally, and they ask grade your local school district. In this case, they give their local school district 13% of A, in the case of District 99, 21% in A, which is a pretty strong number. So, together, A and B, we're at 56%, compared to other districts, it's a pretty decent number.
Do you have any hypotheses as to why our don't-know numbers are so high?
Sure, so the, so when you do, and Jim explained this the other night, so when you do a phone poll, which the Gallup poll was, they don't give you a don't-know option, okay? But on the mail survey, there's a box that says "don't-know," and so a lot of them were checking the don't-know. In terms of level of awareness, I usually want this to be about 70%, and we're not that high when we add up the a lot and some. But then, all of a sudden, when we go to how satisfied are you with the body information, we're at 70%, so there is room for further education in terms of the voter base. Sometimes, it's so high, we're like, you know, 85% know a lot about it, you're not gonna move the needle much with further education. Here, I think there's an opportunity to move the needle to a positive if you do more information. So, are you handling taxpayer money wisely, as well as important as the grade the district question? And we're at 53% very confident or somewhat confident. I want that number to be about 60%. Why do I want to know?
You took out no response and don't-know unsure, are you realistic?
Right, but just based on 26 years of doing mail surveys in school districts throughout the country, usually, we see this around 60%.
So, you're saying that regardless of the number of don't-knows and no responses?
Correct.
So, if the don't-knows and no responses have been over 40%, then if you're at 10%?
But that holds true for all districts where, you know, same would hold true. I mean, there might be districts where there's a smaller percentage of don't-know unsure, but oftentimes, it's about there. The reality is that rarely do you ever get above 17% of the very confident. It's a public enemy, everything circles down to the federal government, so federal, state, local, right? Every time you turn on the news, something negative about taxes, and so, you know, I'm surprised we even get to 50%. So, then we tested parts of the package before we tested messaging, and these are in the order of highest priority. And so, the top was security enhancements, both North and South High, we have 54% high priority. So, typically, a number of 30% or higher, when we add the 4 and the 5 together, if it's 30%, it's a really good number. So, look at that, anywhere at 74%. And the number to the right, where you have it says 54P, 54NP, that's 54% parent, 54% non-parent. It's breaking it out, so that's it, you're gonna see that throughout as we go through these. The next one was ADE improvements, 46% high priority, again, add in the number 4 level, and it's really high. Updating classrooms and science labs, 34%. Installing air conditioning, 31%. You can see the color coding, again, where green means it was, the parent had a higher percentage than the average number, and then that non-parent had a slightly lower number. But still, it's around, you know, pretty decent numbers. You can see that the installing air conditioning, you get down to 28, just for the number, the high priority for the non-parent, you add in the number, you know, the next level, well over 30% we're looking for. So, as we keep going down the list, creating a secure main entrance at South High, updating the school's dated exterior, is at 29%. And improving safety and security at North by moving the loading dock, 26%. Again, though, we're still well over that 30%, we got the 4 and 5, or level 4 together. Expansion of improvements to the undersized auditorium at South, 21%. Expanding and improving the 59-year-old undersized cafeteria at North, we're at 19%, but again, adding it to level 4, we're well above the threshold.
Paul, just to reiterate, to reiterate, thank you. The number we're looking for is 4 plus 5 greater than 30%?
Correct.
Means that it's strongly supported as we do the survey.
Correct.
Just wanna make sure.
So, the level 4, see at the top, it says 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and? Exactly.
Great, if those two numbers combined are greater than 30%, the respondents, it's a strong response in favor.
Does it hold true, though, that the reverse, if 1 and 2 together over 30%?
Yep, we're gonna get to that. Good question. Please, to the next part. So, now we're at, we're at 38%, but now we start seeing, look to the left, at 1 and 2, 37%. We're almost tied on the intensity of the low priority versus high priority. We can see that now the non-parent is losing interest, and the parent is above 17% on the high priority. But then we get to enhancements to athletic fields at each school, we're at 11% high priority, add it together, we're still at 30, but now to the left, you're right, you start looking at low priority, we see that the intensity higher on the low priority. And we see how low it gets with the non-parent at 9%. And then adding the second synthetic field at South, you know, combined, it's 29%, but look at the intensity of the low priority. So, then the next part of the survey, tested messaging for and against the proposal, and I'll just say that when Jim does his presentation, when he tests his messaging, it wasn't static, which means that it was rotated. So, first, some of the, so half the people heard arguments against first, and then they heard arguments for, and then the other half heard arguments for, and then against, and all the messaging was rotated, so there was not, there wasn't a first response bias. You know, with the mail survey, it's static, because they're getting in the mail, you know, you presented the pro arguments first. So, the leading argument is at the top, students should not have to worry about being parentless at school, creating secure entrances where visitors can be properly screened is important. So, in this one, anything over 30%, in that very convincing line, we're not adding the 4 and 5 anymore, it's just in that number 5 line, anything over 30% is a really strong number. So, here, we're at 54%. The next message was about, it's a fair and reasonable request to improve accessibility at each of the high schools, 41%, and again, you can look to the right at the parent and non-parent data. The building improvements to both North, to both high schools will extend their useful life another 30 years or more, 39%. Quality schools drive for property values, 34%. With the 20-year bond issue about to be paid off, and with borrowing costs that are historically low, critical facility improvements to be addressed, we go up there at the high, at the lowest possible tax impact, 32%. And you can see all the, all the parents, all these messages are resonating more with them, as they're all in green. We get down to the last question, where we still reach that benchmark, which is most classrooms and labs at North and South are outdated, it makes sense to modernize these instructional spaces, 31%. And now, we fall below the 30% benchmark. With voter approval, the bond measure this spring, air conditioning could be installed by fall 2018, 35% in the classrooms, we're at 26%. And again, you can see the parents are at 35%, non-parent 23%. Creating a space that has counselors, nursing, technology, sport, and other student services, all of them location for students is a great idea. Most new Scotty High Schools and community colleges of Illinois and nationally have this type of learning commons area, 15%, but I have a disclaimer about this one. So, as your superintendent went out to take presentations, people perceived this as one big room, and that counselors were in the room rather than their own offices. So, rather than a gateway to classrooms, it was perceived that somehow the counselors and others would be kind of in this open space. So, it'd be interesting if that number reflected that, if they knew that, you know, still, you know, certain counselors would have their rooms where they would be with students, and the psychologist to, you know, go down the list, the nursing, so.
I received a good number of phone calls from people in the community that were like, "Explain this to me, counselors, you're just gonna be sitting at like a table in the gap, no, no, this is so they can get to their office." "Oh, that makes sense then," you know, so it was, I think, you know, as we read through it, as everybody read through this and tried to explain it, there was some confusion between our explanation and people's understanding. So, I think, you know, this really helps us in our next phase with whatever the board decides to afford with, that we need to do a better job of explaining how this actually functions in this space.
Thank you. And then we tested arguments against, and we did not just put a bunch of fluff ball questions together that are gonna be not hard-hitting, these were all pretty hard-hitting anti-question, or arguments against. So, the one that resonated the most, many District 99 residents have paid their fair share in taxes to the schools over the years, are now on fixed incomes. Any increase in taxes will be a hardship for the seniors in our community, 35%. With the new field houses built just 17 years ago, you would think there'd be enough space to accommodate all of physical education and athletic needs at the schools, 31%. With the recent increase in state income taxes, this is not a good time, 31%. District 99 should be pursuing a bond proposal that does not require a tax for any increase, 30%. Again, you can see the parents less, less of, or at least, mess up this messaging versus the, versus the non-parent. And the last one that reaches the benchmark, District 99 should have been saving for the proposed improvements rather than asking for additional tax dollars, 30%. So, then we ask another very important question, which is, I'll read the question. So, for homeowners of District 99, the estimated annual tax impact of the proposed 20-year, $136 million bond issue, $65 for a $300,000 home. How concerned are you about the impact of the proposed tax on your family's home budget? And we get 41%, we're very concerned or extremely concerned, and again, after 26 years of doing this, anything over 35% is kind of high, so we're at 41%. Then we ask the valid question, and we get 52%, yes, 40%, no. We get, and what's important, and Jim will explain this further in his presentation, we get 27% definitely yes, 25% definitely no. We're never gonna change the mind of the definitely yes, we're never gonna change the mind of the definitely no. But oftentimes, these others can move. In fact, the yes votes can move to a negative. And so, you know, I like to see where it's super high, yes intensity, or like super low, definitely no intensity, and here, they're almost equal. Then we look at support by age, and typically, the older the voter, the less supportive they are of a tax measure. And so, this kind of held true here, except we had such a low number of 18 to 24-year-old responses. year old responding, I think it was like ten, that it was kind of an outlier, but that typically would be very supportive. In fact, it would be, that purple, purple lines would be way to the right. But as you can see, as we move down in age, we start to lose them. At about age fifty-five is where we go into the low fifty percent support. So support by employee versus others, seventy percent support by employee, fifty-three percent other, it's a pretty good number. Sometimes you don't see that surprisingly. Sometimes employees are not supportive of a particular measure, and you're like, wow, then they have problems. Support for the ballot question by gender, this is very common, male forty-six percent yes, female sixty-one percent. We see that all the time. Support for the ballot question by community residents, the only community that doesn't get above that fifty percent is Derry, but the others all definitely do. Downers Grove is twenty-five plus twenty-nine. Highest intensity is Oak Brook, thirty-seven percent definitely yes. Support for the ballot question in terms of if they have kids in one of the schools, and so North High was the highest, all by South High, and then at Transition ninety-nine. Indignos with, that indicate that they don't have a child at school, we're still at fifty-one District ninety-nine parent versus non-parent, so the parent, District ninety-nine students, sixty-one percent, and the non-parent fifty percent. Sometimes I see that usually about seventy, seventy-five percent of the parent, but with the high school district, a lot of times you have, you know, folks who have a senior, and they're like, okay, the kid's gone after this, and they're trying to think through the, but. So then we asked the ballot question, if it was reward to eighty-one point six million, and we get sixty-three percent yes and twenty-six percent no. This case, we have twenty-six percent definitely yes and twelve percent definitely no. Then we asked an open-ended question, which actually occurred before the first ballot question of the hundred and thirty-six million, do you have any concerns? And seventeen percent indicated tax impact, almost half said, they didn't answer, they put none, six percent positive comment, five percent indicating something that the proposal is unnecessary, four percent mentioning use of proceeds or oversight, three percent talked about scaling back proposal, and three percent where they were asking for more information. Not going to read you through all the details, but we have that available on your slides. So I just want to go right to the summary. So first thing is you had really good marks, that's the first step. If you had, if you had, if we said grade the district and they're really poor, these grades, it would be a nonstarter. You'd have a really hard time trying to, trying to pass this. There are definitely opportunities to inform the district more, district residents. You have moderate support for a hundred and thirty-six million dollar proposal at fifty-two percent. Tax sensitivity is relatively, relatively strong for the hundred and thirty-six million. There is definitely strong support for the eighty-one point six million dollar proposal. Security improvements, ADU improvements are kind of top of the list in terms of what people care about. Lowest priority issues were learning commons, athletic fields, and adding a second synthetic field at South High. Arguments in favor of the proposal tested stronger than arguments against. And messages that were strongest were tight security accessibility, extending the life of the buildings, protecting property values. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions before Jim presents the poll results. Keep in mind, it's a non-scientific, writes a general under totally electorate, said the only thing that we're reading is typically a mail survey is more positive than a poll.
Question. Can you talk about who's that did the virtual account or did they have a process?
It's based on twenty-six years of doing this, and those measures that have passed have had thresholds above thirty percent or higher. I was mentioning that on the, typically the mail survey is more positive than the phone poll. In fact, it's often has eight to ten, eight to ten percentage points higher than the phone poll. But for whatever reason, Jim's results are higher than the mail survey. Jim's results are scientific, these results are not. The reason these are not is because we can't exactly match the demographics of the electorate. When Jim polled people, he polled only likely voters. We polled both, we mailed to both unlikely and likely voters. In fact, we mailed, we mailed to every registered voter, or to every household, not just every registered voter, household. So if I was a betting man, I'd bet on Jim's info more than I'd bet on Matt's info. It's not to say you can't discriminate, but his is going to be more typically more accurate. So the last time, so the last time I did one of these, and we had kind of this outlier, the group said, okay, go back and look at the last ten mail surveys, you, you them down in Illinois, and tell me how far off they were. And it was, they were four percentage points above, too friendly, above the final results of the ballot measures. The only, but, but there's a disclaimer there. The last one that we did was District thirty, North Brookline View District thirty, and it polled at approximately forty-nine point five percent. And I said, wow, and it's only data we have, we didn't do a poll, because they didn't have enough voters to do a scientific poll. And I said, this is going to be really hard to pass. They passed it seventy-five percent. They passed it seventy-five percent because every parent showed up to vote, and it was about low turnout election. So it was, it was an April two thousand and seventeen election, so what they had seventy-five percent support. So again, it was twenty-five percentage points off, right, my fifty percent. Jim has done a lot of surveys, Nutrile was an example, sixty-five percent he polled at, Nutrile was sixty-five. LaSalle through high school district polled at fifteen point five percent, the end result was like fifteen point two percent. So he has all sorts of examples that work pretty tight. My stuff is all over the place. But again, this is non-scientific.
Could you go back to page twenty-seven? So I get, completely accept that it's unscientific versus scientific.
Right.
But the difference between the sixty-three and twenty-six and thirty-seven delta versus the twelve delta on the larger measure, and the difference between the two delta on the larger measure, the definitely yes to definitely no with a fourteen year?
Yeah, I mean, when I said, when I walked in, you know, when I walked in the room the first day, and I was interviewing, I said, if you guys do a no tax rate increase proposal, it's a slam dunk. Not that any taxes is a slam dunk, but usually that's a slam dunk. You know, that does not record a tax rate increase, you can address all these facility needs. So I, I wasn't surprised that it, that it was like that. The other thing you got to think about is if the mail survey were, were some people, which I know, I would fill it out, I would go question by question, some people will read through them, some people will read through and go, oh, wait a minute, there's a, there's a lower option here. I'm going low, and I'm going no on the other one. So that could happen as well.
Generally though, Paul, the, the change between the two, is it, is the resistance not the support? Is that a fair statement? Like the support is fairly people on that side, it's how strongly the definite no's drop.
Right, exactly. I mean, we had a bunch of, we have definitely nos moving to a yes position.
Right.
Which is nice. We have, and we have those people that are on the fence that are soft nos, they're definitely like, oh, yes, an alibi yes.
That's where the shift occurs.
Before I remind you to say that, your superintendent, your CFO, your buildings guru, and your public information officer, slay it. I work with a lot of school districts out in the country, and, and what happens is during these public policy processes, they either slay it, or they sit on their hands, and they slay it. So thank you for, for all the effort.
That's good to hear.
Very good job. So I'm going to turn it over to Jim now, he's going to do the poll.
All right, thank you, Paul, and thank you all for having us involved in this project. My name's Jim Obar, we're with Public Opinion Strategies, we are a national polling research firm based in Alexandria, Virginia, and do polling projects all over the country on a wide variety of issues, everything from national surveys, we're part of the bipartisan polling team for the NBC News, Wall Street Journal National Survey, and then also do things at a much more local level, school districts, park districts, things like that, and always enjoy working on those projects. So yeah, as Paul mentioned, this is a scientific survey of three hundred likely voters in the district, and when we say likely, that's voters who are likely to vote in this March primary, which is what we are, have been talking about right now, so that's going to be a lower number than those who will vote in the general election, or who would vote in a, in a general presidential election. One question that I always get asked is, hey, I have, I don't have a landline, so you probably didn't call me. That's not true. For the past, well, let's see, at least six years, we have been calling cell phones on every single polling project that we do, and quite frankly, if you see a poll that doesn't include cellphone-only households, it's, it's not worth the paper it's printed on. And so for this survey, for example, we did thirty-five percent, approximately thirty-five percent of interviews with cellphone-only households, which for a primary election tends to be a little bit over an electorate, that's the number we tend to shoot for for a general election, would be a forty or forty-five percent of cellphone-only households. And then also, as Paul mentioned, another thing we're able to do, because this is a phone poll, is make sure that it is a demographically representative sample. And so both in terms of the communities that are represented, and then what's really important is the age quotas that we set. If I just took the first three hundred people who picked up the phone, I would end up with eighty-five percent of voters who are over the age of fifty-five plus, and the vast majority of those would be women. Because we do set these age quotas, and so age is one of the very first questions we ask on the survey, once I hit my quota of voters age sixty-five plus, or voters age fifty-five plus, someone picks up the phone, I say, what year were you born in? And I don't do the interview, but what our interviewer says, what year were you born in? And I say nineteen forty-three, and I said, thanks so much, that's all the questions I have for you, and we'll go right back to looking for these younger voters. So that's another example of what specifically we're able to do to target the, the right demographics for this electorate. And so, we did two things here. We did a split sample, so half of the sample, a hundred and fifty likely voters, got the one hundred and thirty-six point six million dollar option, those got the eighty-one point six million dollar option. And it's the very first question we ask on the phone survey, and the reason for that is we want to simulate what they're going to get when they go to the ballot box on election day. And so we don't want to spend a bunch of time explaining what it's going to be, we say, you're walking in here on that March date, you read the ballot language, how do you react? So for the first option, sixty-one percent yes, twenty-eight percent no, thirty-two percent definitely yes, twenty percent definitely no, so a twelve-point spread on intensity. One thing, and again, to, to keep in mind, this, the sixty-one percent number looks great, and it is, but it's also important to keep in mind that voters are much more likely, and this is true of any type of ballot issue in the country, whether it's a huge statewide ballot initiative changing the state constitution, or something more local and more small, undecided voters will almost always break to no. So when you're looking at this, sixty-one, twenty-eight is really probably more like sixty-one, thirty-nine, and then you've got to worry about those thirty percent who are probably yes also. The other option, eighty-one point six, sixty-four percent yes, twenty-nine percent no. So the numbers are really fairly similar, but when we do see advantages on that intensity, so instead of a twelve-point intensity advantage, we have an eighteen-point intensity advantage here. We saw that same type of shift in intensity on the mail survey also. And then we looked at it by party, and what you see is there is a clear base for this, and that is Democrats. Democrats are locked in on supporting this measure, and hey, guess what, Democrats, again, regardless of the topic, regardless of the part of the country, Democrats are always more receptive to tax increases than Republicans are. Republicans, just under forty-seven, or fifty percent for one thirty-six, forty-seven percent for the eighty-one point six option, and independents, really almost no change in level of support at fifty-three and fifty-five. But it's, it's very clear that when we're talking about a base of support in this potential election, parents for sure will be there, but then from a party's perspective, it's Here we looked at it by various gender and age groups. Again, not surprisingly, it's the younger voters who are most supportive, regardless of which option that we tested, younger women almost always drive the support for this type of measurement. One thing that's encouraging is we do get over fifty percent with seniors, voters who are age sixty-five plus. A lot of times you'll see those voters who are, well, they're the toughest to get because they're the least likely to have students in the school, but the challenges are also the most likely to turn out, and your super voters who are there every single time, so to be above fifty percent with them is a good thing, and a lot of times you see it, and it's, it's down in the mid-forties. And then here's, again, children in the household, and this is any child under the age of eighteen, no kids, fifty-seven or fifty-five, depending on the measure, eighty, seventy-six, so yes, so you see, that's, that's where the big split is. Again, not a surprise, and Paul referenced this in his presentation, guess what, the younger your kids are, the more likely you are to support. And again, the reason for that is, you know that your kid's going to be seeing the benefit, where if you have a tenth grader or an eleventh grader, and yeah, that sounds nice, but by the time they take effect, my kid will be off in college. And so here we broke it out into what we call our definitely yes voters, definitely no, and then our swing voters. Definitely yes are that thirty-two percent, the definitely no are the twenty percent that I was mentioning earlier, those voters are pretty much going to be locked in. The definitely no voters are never going to get any of those. The definitely yes voters are going to be with you coming out of high water. And who are those definitely yes voters? They're Democrats, as, as we mentioned, homeowners at the top, that's such a small portion of the electorate, I wouldn't pay too much attention to that, but it's Democrats, it's K-six, child in the household, it's younger voters, age eighteen to forty-four, it's those voters who give the district an A grade. So again, it lines up with what you would expect. The definitely no voters, it's the, the small number who give the district lower grades, again, not a surprise at all. It's, and you'll see this in a few questions, but we also asked on the phone survey about the facilities, how they would grade the facilities, so not the district, but the facilities. So if you're grading the facilities, then hey, you're not likely to support it, because in your opinion, the facilities are, are already really good. And then the real key is, here, who are our swing voters? It's voters age forty-five to fifty-four, it's women age eighteen to fifty-four, it's those who don't know how to grade the facility, and that's something that Paul mentioned as well, is there is some opportunities for continued education on this issue. And then same thing here, but this is for the eighty-one point six million dollar option. Definitely yes voters, they give the facilities a C grade, so they see the need for improvements. It's younger voters, it's Democrats, it's those with the children in the high schools, the definitely no, older men, always the most challenging, given the district a low grade, and the swing voters largely match up with what we saw on the one thirty-six option, also age fifty-five, sixty-four, those who don't know what grades did at the high school. And then, just as in the phone survey, we did an open-ended response, asked those, one or two main reasons you would vote yes, one or two main reasons you would vote no. The yes, schools need more space, it helps the disableds, they emphasize the importance of education, improving the school infrastructure, they've got kids who are going to attend the schools, the schools should be safer, these improvements are needed, and it improves their home values are potentially no, would raise taxes, that's always what we see the most when it comes open-ended responses. Not all improvements are necessary, it's too expensive, the schools are good now, it's a waste of money, or it does not affect me. Again, especially those no open ends, those are the challenges for almost any bond meter in the country. And then here we said, would you be more likely or less likely to vote yes in favor of this measure if you learned that? First, we asked the tax impact, it would be sixty-five dollars per year for a three hundred dollar vote, that's what the one thirty-six point six option folks got, twenty percent more likely, eleven percent less likely, sixty-nine percent said no difference. That no difference number is pretty encouraging. If this was twenty percent more likely, thirty, thirty-five percent less likely, that would show a real tax sensitivity, sensitivity challenge. These numbers are really fairly low, and then for the eighty-one point six. And then for the 81.6 option, they said there will be no tax rate increase associated with the bond measure. 50% said they would be more likely to support it. 1% were confused and said they were less likely, and then 47% said it made no difference to them. Here we get into some of the good news. This is, again, just like we saw on the mail survey, what grade would you give the district high schools? 28% A, 42% B. So we've got 70% at A or B, 15% C, and just 3, and 1% at T or F. And that don't know number, again, because don't know isn't a red option on the phone survey, is much lower, 11%. Then we see why this is so important. If you give the district an A, your support is north of 75%. It's all the way to 82% for the 81.6 million dollar option. B, you're still pretty high, in the either high 60s or right at 70%. And then if you're giving it a C, you're going to be much less likely to support it, and you're going to be one of those definitely no voters who in all likelihood will have trouble getting it no matter what we do. Then we also asked if North High and South High are better than, about the same, or not as good as high schools in other parts of the state. 62% say better, 3% not as good, 29% about the same. And again, this is just a question that really lets us see, in not a direct way, how receptive voters are to this type of measure. If these numbers were, if we were looking at 40% better, 20% not as good, 40% about the same, there's just not going to be the same type of pride in institution that we see in a district like this, which is really helpful when trying to pass the measure. Top groups better, so those gave the facilities an A, gave the high school an A, those who had children in their household. And then finally, grade the facilities, 10% A, 41% B, 15% C. This is about where we'd like to be. If we were, we were 41% A, 10% B, that would be a challenge, but what this says is, hey, they're pretty good, but they still recognize that there's some room for improvement. How confident are they that the district is handling tax payer money wisely? 17% very confident, 55% somewhat, gives us a 73% total confident. Again, and Paul mentioned this as well, that very confident number here is not going to get above the teens. People just, they don't trust anyone with their money other than themselves. And now here we got into some of the specific items that could be funded with these measures or with this measure. Leading the way, and again, this extremely very important number, this is similar to what Paul was talking about with combining the four and the five. So anything above 30, especially 40%, indicates that it's really strong. Updating aging classrooms leading the way at 68% extremely are very important. Creating a secure main entrance at both high schools at 67%. Addressing safety and security enhancements at both high schools, 64%. Improving accessibility at 63% extremely are very important. And 59% installing air conditioning in the classrooms that do not have air conditioning. And the important thing to remember about this is that the reasons these test so highly, even though they're not the glitz and glamour type messages, is because they're the messages that it's seniors, the people who don't have students who directly benefit from some of these items, they recognize that, hey, these are things that our schools should have. Our schools should be safe and secure. We should have updated aging classrooms. When you go to the next slide, what do not test as well? Look at the bottom there. It's 35% extremely are very important, so it's still okay, but that's the ninth best testing message here. And the reason something like making enhancements to the outdoor facilities, additions to locker rooms, even though you can make these great pretty pictures of them, they look really good, on the mail surveys and the information letters, is just a very small number of parents, of voters, who are going to be benefiting from this type of improvement, so it just doesn't resonate as strongly with them. But up top, expanding and improving the cafeteria, that tests well also. And then creating alerting comments, students' access accounts for social workers, psychologists, activities, tech support, deans, cafeteria, library, bookstore, didn't get to that 50% level, but also, as several folks have mentioned, it's important that there's a lot of education on what exactly that is. And then my ones that did test quite as high, expanding and improving the outdated undersized auditorium, building a new gym for physical education, athletic programs, adding a second synthetic outdoor field at South, improving the practice field at South, so it's on par with the practice field at North High. Those were below that 30% threshold. And sometimes when you see two messages that are very similar, just to give an example, adding the second synthetic outdoor field, similar ones available at North, improving the practice field at South, so it's on par with the practice field at North. In those instances, we split samples so we can see if any of the language works better. And here, just briefly, we broke it down by what's most important to the definitely yes votes, what's most important to the definitely no. See some similarities, updating the aging classrooms, topping the list with both. But look at the difference. For those who are voting definitely yes, 93% say updating the aging classrooms and labs is extremely or very important to them. Among those who are definitely no, 29% say it's extremely or very important. And then the real important here, the swing voters, create a secure main entrance at both North High and South High, addressing the safety and security enhancements at both North High and South High, and then improving accessibility. So three things that, again, not the glitz and glamour messages, but these key swing voters say, hey, it's important that these items all be a part of our schools. And just going briefly through here, did the same thing for the definitely yes and definitely no's on the 81.6 option, and with those swing voters as well. And then here, we've always, under all of these types of measures, always want to emphasize transparency, and this data does a good job of telling that story. Again, if you learned that all spinning from the bottom will be publicly disclosed, 87% more likely to support it, just 10% less likely. If you learned that the district will conduct community outreach meetings, provide updates on projects to be funded by the bond measure, 78% more likely. Just an indication of just how important that openness and transparency really is on these types of measures. And then here, very similar to the mail survey, did arguments both in favor and against, and as Paul mentions, these messages were always rotated and randomized, so half got their positive messages first, half got the negative. And within those positive and negative messages, the order was completely randomized, so no bias there. Next reason to do it, installing secure entry vestibules in North High and South High, will prevent visitors from entering the buildings until cleared by school personnel. That's all the way up at 61% very convincing. These next three are 47% very convincing, which is a great number, but being all the way up at 61% really indicates how effective that type of message can be. Next, any of the accessibility issues, air conditioning, and specifically saying that the researchers showed that students perform better in classes with air conditioning. Both those messages tested had a solid 47% very convincing. Here we've got another host of good ones. Expanding and proving the auditorium, improvements in classrooms and labs at both high schools. This is, again, pride in institution type messages about North High and South High being a factor in our community, great students, teachers, staff, maintenance professionals. Funding these improvements will give everyone involved in these schools the 21st century facilities they deserve. And then a similar amount of money will be spent on improvements at both North and South High, ensuring that all students in the district benefit equally from the increase in funding. That equity message doesn't test off the charts, but it is something that's really important to emphasize, just so the district does understand that.
Jim, can you go back to the auditorium?
Yes.
So talk about how at first the auditorium maybe doesn't get super high.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, we're going to tell a story, and all of a sudden people go, oh, okay.
Yeah, I think Paul used exactly the right languages. We tell a story. We say the auditorium was built 53 years ago, has seats for only 800 students, not enough for a school that has 2,700 students. So when people first hear about building the auditorium, maybe not. When you give them the initial detail that built 53 years ago, old enough for over 800 students, it becomes a lot more compelling. These just don't test quite as well. Again, the learning comments, maybe the lack of understanding pops up a little bit there. And then the challenges of the new athletic facilities that we saw, and the issue priority is also seeing the message where we're just at 20 and 22% very convincing respectively on those. And then, again, broke down one of the best messages with the different key groups, definitely yes, North High and South High being a factor in our community, followed by installing secure entry vestibules. So those are the messages that are going to get people who are already excited about this even more excited. And the swing voters, again, security, accessibility, improvements to classrooms, and then the cost of the air conditioning units as well. Definitely yes and definitely no, the 81.6, similar improvements to the classrooms, school district using the temporary air conditioning, similar amount of money, the equity message really very effective with those groups. And then with swing on 81.6, security, air conditioning, accessibility, what we've been seeing repeatedly throughout this. And finally, always like to break it down by parents and non-parents. Here's where you see why that security message tests so well, because, yeah, parents love it, 67% very convincing, but surely the non-parents at 58%. The accessibility message, the auditorium message, works better with the parents. Again, that's going to be something that they know they are more likely to benefit from. And then also always like to look at seniors as well, security message, copying the list with that group also. And finally, again, tested the opposition messages and try to make these as strong as we can, so we're getting a realistic outlook. Biggest challenge is budget prices in the state right now, it's not a good time to be raising taxes. We should wait until the state has its budget under control before we do this. 31% very convincing, so just copying that 30% threshold. For those who got that $136.6 million option, send them to schools trying to do too much at one time, that's a 29% very convincing. A difference when we use the same message about the 81.6, not quite as effective, but just 21% very convincing.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I noticed that some of these are split samples.
Yes, sir.
So that means, you know, 150 got...
Right, and so especially, like, since the 150 only originally got the 136.6, we want to make sure that same 150 got the one about the 136.6, being the school district doing too much at one time. And then for those who got the 81.6 initially, they were read the different message. And these much less, much lower, 18% very convincing, 16%. But I do think it's to remember that even though some of these messages don't test quite as well, you are going to have the voters who are very concerned about these types of messages. So even if it's just 11% very convincing, you're likely going to have someone who comes up to someone in a coffee shop and says, hey, we don't need these new fancy classrooms. And the phrase that Paul always uses that I adopted myself is, in all those instances, it's just important to respect the taxpayer and say, hey, we understand that you're concerned about this, that's why we're talking to the community, and go all like that. Never want to be in a position where a taxpayer's concern is just being dismissed. And then always ask what we call the inform ballot, which is asking to hear all of these messages, where are you? So for the 136.6 option, started out at 61-28, ended up at 63-30, really no change there. Same thing is true on the 81.6 option, 64-29 to 66-27. Yeah, the numbers are slightly better, but from a pure polling perspective, there really no change there, which is good news. What we don't want to see is the opposition increasing that, as we know from experience, is much more likely. So to be holding around that north of 60% level is certainly encouraging.
Hold on, Jim.
Yep, yes.
So when you look at that, do you feel like there is equal support once scientifically tested for both metrics?
Yes, it's, well, it's funny you bring up my next question.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
I just...
There's nothing in this data that makes the case for going for the less expensive option. Support for 136.6 is almost equally as high as the 81.6 option. Initial support is driven by Democrats and parents, but measures over 50% of the Republicans, non-parents, and seniors. Updating the classrooms, improving security and increase in accessibility for those with disabilities, clearly the voters' top funding priorities. The new gym and renovated auditorium are secondary priorities, it's not where voters are focused, although when they do hear more about the story of the auditorium, support for that aspect does increase. And finally, should be conscious and sympathetic to concerns over the budget prices in the state. I don't think that that is something that's going away anytime soon. So it's certainly important to be mindful of that. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. Can you talk about the dynamics of the March 2018 election and how that may impact whether we want to put this on ballot for March versus November based on the results that are being presented?
Sure, this is something that Paul and I have been talking about for months, and I think it's a real interesting question. Oh, sure. So the question was how the dynamic of going in March during the gubernatorial primary and the other primary elections would be different than going in November. And I think the reality is, there is going to be such an incredibly expensive Democratic primary on that March ballot, that Democratic candidates are going to be doing everything they can to get those voters out. And when you're trying to pass a tax measure, that is a very good thing. In most cases, Paul would recommend, and I would recommend, going in November, but I think because of this gubernatorial primary, and what it's going to do to Democratic turnout, there's a real chance to get this thing passed in March. And to be clear, if this was, if some super rich guy was running against the other super rich guy who happens to be the current governor, and there's going to be juiced-up Republican turnout in the state, my advice would be just the opposite. But because both Prince, Prinsker, and Kennedy, as well as their opponents as well, but especially those two, are going to be so incredibly well-funded, I think that the turnout efforts they're going to make are just going to be incredible, and a good thing if you're trying to pass the tax measure. Other questions? Well, we really appreciate you guys having us out here.
All right. Turn your seats. Good job, Paul. Especially turned you down. You were killing it.
Yeah.
Oh, good job.
Okay. You have one?
I have one.
Dr. Thielen, you have some additional comments?
Okay, so, thank you, Jim and Paul, for all of the numbers crunching and presenting. I know that this, or I believe this is a lot of what the board a year ago was asking for, was what does the community think about all of this? A key part coming back from this that I also want to integrate into the conversation is the work of the Citizens Task Force, which was a group of 40 citizens from across the community. It represented a good cross-section of actual communities, so the different areas we draw from. It had a wide range of ages. It had folks that had kids, didn't have kids, so it was a great group to work with. Don was part of that group as well. So I want to eventually get to some of their feedback, because we met last Thursday for the final meeting, and I had them weigh in on this information. My takeaways as I look at this, eventually tonight, I want to get to where I'm leaning towards for the board, to know what our next actions would be moving forward. Ultimately, if the board chose to put something on the March 20th ballot, we would have to have a decision by the board made by December 31st of this year. So I would like to, after I go through a few points here, hear from the board as to what would you like? Would you like something brought forward at the December 18th board meeting? Or not?
I think you called me.
No, I called you. Hi. Hi, I'm calling Sherrell from here.
Do I have to separate the two?
Yeah, I don't know. They're just, I don't know why my phone's...
It's why they're talking to each other.
Yeah, I don't know. So I pocket dialed Sherrell from right next door. So at the end of the night...
It's why they're talking to each other.
Yeah, I don't know. So I pocket dialed Sherelle from right next door. So at the end of the night, I'm hoping to get from the board a feeling of what you feel should come next. This is, this is kind of where I'm sitting and looking at the data now, after spending several months of looking at what came back. As the mailed surveys came back, which are not as scientific as the phone poll, we started keeping track of the number of folks that felt, or the percentage of responses that said do something versus do nothing. When we look at those, 80% of the surveys that were sent back to us said do something. Now, Paul brought up the aspect that on those mailed-in surveys, people were given the option, they saw the two side by side, of are you going to vote for the more expensive one or the least expen, or the less expensive one? I think a lot of people, when poised with those two things, will naturally choose the less expensive one. It doesn't cause their taxes to go up. I think that that plays somewhat into the responses that we saw come back in the polls that Paul was looking at. When we take a look at the scientific poll that Jim just went through, when they didn't really know that the other two options existed, that they knew an option existed, you see statistically exact number support for both plans. You see the positive messages around this plan, strongly supported overall. You see the negative ideas not supported overall in the messages that were presented to the community. Over the last two meetings, the Citizens Task Force has seen these presentations, has dove into the data, has been able to question Jim and Paul and our team about all of this information that's there. That Citizens Task Force nearly unanimously recommends that the board move forward in March with the full bond issue for the full plan. That they believe that, they said repeatedly the other night, that the school district needs to give the community the opportunity to reinvest in the learning opportunities for our students in this community. And that the 136.6 million dollar plan reflects the needs identified over the last six years. That it is the board's responsibility to go to the community and ask if they would like to support that larger full plan by putting that on a ballot measure. And then the community would have the opportunity to either weigh in and say, yes, we want to do the whole thing by casting ballots, or come back again in November with a smaller reduced plan if it doesn't pass in March. But that the community needs to be given the opportunity to say no to the larger plan before the smaller plan is brought to them that doesn't reflect the complete needs identified over the last six years. So then it's ultimately my responsibility to bring you a recommendation as the superintendent. So after hearing all of this, after going through all of this data, after talking to our staff here, after talking to members of the community and doing lots of presentations on this, answering phone calls, visiting people at their homes that want to discuss this, I will tell you that it clear, our community clearly says to reinvest in our facilities. That the phone poll says, either way, our community will support this. That the Citizens Task Force clearly says to go after the full plan. And that I believe that that full plan meets all of the identified needs by our staff, by our students, by our community. We owe it to the community, to the District 99 community, to put on the ballot on March 20th, the opportunity to support all of the identified needs for the facilities for District 99 for now and for the next foreseeable generations. It is my recommendation to the board that you put on the March 18, on the March 18th board meeting, we put a resolution to put on the ballot for March 20th, a 136.6 million dollar bond issue to meet those identified needs. So at this point, I will turn it over to the board to ask myself or any of our staff or our experts here, any questions or to provide any comments.
Nancy, could I go? First and foremost, it's been about a year where this board, and I know Dan and Sherelle were not involved, but we were debating prioritizing the projects. And we all realized that we needed feedback from the community as to what they would or would not support from a monetary standpoint. And we asked, you know, our leaders in the district to go out and survey the community. I think they did that. I think they did a fantastic job in that regard. You know, I've been fortunate enough to be involved in a lot of the meetings from the task force, from the presentations at both school districts. I was very, very happy with the way our staff, Hank, Janice, Jill, all of those who were involved in presenting the information to the community in a fact-driven basis. I think I was pleasantly surprised, because I'm not going to hide the fact that I do support this, but I was very pleasantly surprised with regard to the feedback from the residents. I was not very optimistic that we would see this kind of support. Specifically in the phone polling, the, you know, scientific data that was presented to us, we're looking at around 64% support rate in the community, both for the larger and the smaller project. I think we'd be doing a disservice to our community if we didn't give the community an opportunity to say yes to the larger project, because the feedback that we got, which we asked for, says that we should go for it. And so Hank, to answer your question, do we need, do I need any additional information from you before the next meeting? I don't think so. I think we've gotten the feedback that we've asked for, and I think it's time that we take the next step.
I would like to say that I echo your support. I think you guys did a fabulous job, and this presentation today was very helpful. I think this is, we're well situated to get this referendum passed. But I do think that, what I also heard is that, I'm not surprised that we did so well, because I do think that our communities understand, most of our community understands the importance of education. What I would like to see as we go forward maybe is to provide a little more education to the community of the impact of a school, of a good school district on you, even if you don't have a student in the school district at this time. It's good for your home value, it's good for a lot of reasons. And I also think we need to emphasize the fact that we're retiring, that one tax is falling away, so you're not going to feel it, or you're going to hardly feel the new tax. But I agree, I'm very supportive of going forward.
I was just going to say, I definitely echo your comment about providing additional information to people about what it means to the community to have really good facilities, school facilities. I do know in talking to, I live in a neighborhood that is, I want to say, having turnover now. So some of the older people in our neighborhood are moving out because they're all two-story homes. And we're getting families in the neighborhood, and one of the things that they definitely share with me as I introduce myself and my family, that one of the driving forces to move into the area is the school district.
I echo what all of you are saying, and I agree, that we need to educate our, oh, sorry, that we need to educate our community a little bit more about what the district can do for their tax base. So I think that it's important that we go for the larger group amount.
You have any opposing views, or anybody want to?
I still not sure I can support a vote on the 136. Very supportive of the 81, but I am not supportive of the 130, the first, as proposed.
Would you like to elaborate as to why, or?
I feel there is, I like the fact that the taxes that are coming off are going to be reused for the next 20. I just, at this point, cannot support a tax increase.
Okay. Thanks, Rick.
So my thoughts on it, so first off, you know, Jill's here somewhere.
Jill's right there.
Oh, there you are. You were over there earlier. So Jill and Hank, you guys have done a fabulous job with the community and educating the But I would approach it a little bit differently. You know, I support the tax, I support the 81.6. I would be hard-pressed to support the 130, the higher one that would increase taxes. I would be, I believe it should be presented to the community, but I would present it in the fact that I would go in March with the 81, because I think it has a higher chance of approval by the community. If that's approved by the community and approved in the election, and we feel at a future date we want to bring the next one to the community, we could do that. I just don't think it's the right time for a tax increase. I mean, we still have, you guys have done a great job in trying to educate the community. Looking at some of these surveys, we still have 45% of the community that has said they've gotten hardly any information on this. So I just, I would rather go after the 81.6, get that approved, make the required or the majority of the changes to our community, to our schools. I couldn't support a tax increase at this time.
I just, I'm, I don't want to debate the numbers, but I just want to talk about the informing the community part of it. This board is almost taking an unprecedented step in community engagement around an issue that is not yet on a ballot. Okay? Once the board actually takes action and puts one or the other on a ballot, interest in being informed on the topic will grow exponentially throughout the community. This board has taken extraordinary measures to inform its community before putting something out there. Almost every school district across the country passes a resolution to go on a ballot somewhere, and then begins the process of informing their community. This board has really worked hard and put a lot of effort, and has instructed the administration to put a lot of effort upfront on this. I would expect that by March, those numbers of people who don't think that they are well-informed will drop.
Absolutely.
And the fact is, many school districts would have provided this set of information to their students' families, and this board has taken the additional added measure to provide it to every household in the district. Has already received three mailings. So it may not feel to somebody like they've been well-informed, but when you compare what this district has done in comparison to what I've seen other districts do, this board should be commended for the amount of time and effort and expertise that they've brought in to try to inform the District 99 community.
And I think it's great. Getting the community involved early is really important. And I know it's not scientific, and I know it's anecdotal, but in the last two weeks, I've probably talked to 200 customers in my store about this. I have yet to find somebody who supports the larger measure.
Which is, I mean, that's why we do the scientific polls.
Absolutely, yeah.
I just would just like to clarify, because I still am very supportive of going for the higher amount. And when I say I think that we need to still educate the community, it is not that we need to educate the community prior to putting this on the ballot.
Oh, no.
I think as we move towards the vote, we want to make sure that people totally understand. Because, I'm sorry, I don't remember, but your point about the fact that this is going to be an election where there will be a lot of voter turnout, I think is one very well-taken. And I think that, you know, to go through this again, I mean, this is a very expensive process, both monetarily and time, which is money. To do it and then come back in a few years and say, well, we need a little more money, I just don't, I think that's a misuse of resources. And I would also just like to point out the fact that I really commend the work that our group has done, because should the event happen that we have cost overruns or whatever, the community has helped us prioritize what we need to attack, where we need to, where we could hold back if we needed to. So I think this is, personally, again, I'm supportive of this, and I think, I know nobody who would not support, who, I know nobody personally, it's not scientific, it's not, it's just anecdotal. I know nobody who, I know nobody who does not support the schools and understand the necessity for taxes to support the schools.
And I just wanted to add that it's unfortunate that there are still people who don't feel like they've been well, they are, right, well-educated on this, because I know, as a potential board member, that was some of the things that people had asked me about. I will say that as a board, and I think Dr. Theeley has done a great job at being available, as he's saying here tonight. He's gone to people's homes, he's filled phone calls. So I encourage those that aren't, that feel that they still are uneducated, to take some of the steps that Dr. Theeley talked about this evening.
Good idea, Sherelle.
Yeah, because like Hank said, most school boards don't come out front like this. And I think this whole process that we've done has been a phenomenal process. We've been upfront, seeking input, where most of the time this happens, or they put something on the ballot. So I think, and this has just been one meeting, this has been hours of people's times, and I think it's been a great process, a great process, honestly.
And I will put in a plug that all the videos are available on the website, so before you call me to your house, you can watch the videos.
Just tell them you need dinner and, you know.
Maybe dinner gets it done.
I'll say a couple words. When I think back to, it's more than a year ago, there was a point, prior to you even being here, Hank, when the board was going through a very difficult process of trying to prioritize these things amongst us. And it's interesting, I think possibly the way the community lined up those priorities is not too dissimilar from maybe where we were. And so that says to me that we've got a great, I think in terms of our board, a good reflection of the community. I was, you may recall, unwilling to take some things off the list before. I'm very glad that we decided not to. I think the scientific poll definitely shows whether you're asking one question or the other, that the support is just as strong. And so I think we asked for this sort of input, this guidance, and we've received it. And it only makes sense that we would go ahead and give our community a chance to make a decision about this. I have three students here at South right now. Probably, maybe my youngest might see some benefit of this by the time she graduates, but it's not about me or what I want, or what any of us individually want. We're very proud of the work that this board has done to get to this point. It makes sense that we might not all be in a total agreement as to how much to ask, or, because, I mean, the response on the polling was not 100% one way or another. And so once again, you know, there might be some difference of opinion about how much to ask for. It's not surprising, but it's good to hear that we're all in support of doing something, which is what we heard from the community. So I'm very much in support of going ahead and letting the voters decide. So that's where I'm at.
So you're advocating for that?
I'm advocating for the entire, you know, the entire amount to be asked for. And then I'm, I mean, I sit here tonight, I can tell you that if the responses had come back differently, as much as I personally think that this is the right thing to do, we need to, it's not about what we want, it's about what our community believes, and after presenting the information to people, they've said, yes, do something. the information to people, they've said, "Yes, do something." So I like to see the entire amount asked for, for them to have the chance to say yes or no. And then if they say no, well then, yes, we can talk then about whether or not we ask for something or not at all, and we can hit the reset button and have the discussion. So I'm not willing to commit right now to saying that if it gets voted down, that I'm ready to go for the 86. You know, I think that we would need to convene again and have some discussion about that, depending on what happens. So I don't want to get into that what-if scenario, but at this point, I mean, if we'd only asked one question in this survey, and we were only talking about one thing, the response would, I mean, this would be, there wouldn't be much discussion here tonight. So it's, I think, telling that we as a board asked more than one question, giving people the real understanding of what this all means. And so I, both Dan and Rick, I very much appreciate, you know, your voice here tonight, and it's tough. When we hear people that are on fixed incomes, wow, I mean, that might be me one day too. And it's gonna be difficult for us to be in a position to put something out there that's gonna be 100% yes and everybody agrees with it. But there's a strong, strong support in our community. In my anecdotal comments that have been made to me, church and around school, talking to other parents at meets and things with my kids, I've had people coming up to me saying, "Wow, thank you. Appreciate all the information and this is really exciting." So a great day, I think, for District 99, that we've gotten this information, that we know this, and that there's, that I don't have to sit here tonight and go, clearly there's strong support for the 81, but not for the 136. I mean, that's, so I'm happy, because, boy, it was wrenching to me to, that they're asking, because I really think that the entire, the entire list of things, these are all, I said this a couple years ago, they're all priorities. They're all priorities. It's just a matter of when you're faced with having to say one thing is more important than another, then you put those in a list. But the fact remains that they're all priorities that have been identified, that are things that we need to do. So thank you, outstanding work, outstanding work in terms of the entire team sacrifices and the whole slaying comment. I mean, I've heard that, I truly, Hank, credit all of you, what a terrific job. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. We do have an excellent team that helps me look okay now and then, so thank you to the entire administrative team. I do want to point out that we did test the 136 versus the 81.6, but we also tested all of the different components inside as you saw today. Ultimately, if the board chooses to go to the community and ask for the full plan and that doesn't move forward in May, it would be the board's responsibility to remove items from that and decide, do you go back for just the 81.6 and not raise taxes, or something between 81.6 and 136.6. However, when you look at the, this is why we tested each of the individual aspects of the plan, and the numbers that Jim and Paul brought around each of those, this is the other thing that I look at as I make my recommendation to you, is as you look at all of the aspects on those plans, the individual parts, and that numbers of being above 30% being supportive of the individual items, there's not many items on that list that fall below that 30% threshold. This is part of my thinking in making the recommendation of the full plan, because if it wasn't the full plan, what should be the less-than-full plan? And when I look at that, the only one that really falls below that 30% support line is the second synthetic field at South, is the one aspect of that entire full plan that drops below that number. And part of the board's commitment in building this plan was equality of resources across both sides of town. We've had a lot of conversations on our team as to whether or not we should make the recommendation to the board of a plan that was the full plan minus the synthetic field at South, which would only remove, only, I mean, never use only with money, but it would remove $800,000 to $1 million from the overall plan. That's not a significant move in that, for me to recommend that the board go away from its ideal of providing equity across both sides of town. So that was a consideration. We talked a lot about that, about should the board, should I recommend to the board a $135 million plan, or a $135.5 million plan, and reflect that that one part of the plan wasn't as popular. But ultimately, in the end, there's always going to be the least popular thing on the list. And by removing that, we don't stick to the ideals that the board entered into this with, under my understanding, as this was built even before I got here, which is what leads to that recommendation of the 136.6. If the board chooses to move forward with that and it does not pass in the spring, the board's got a lot of work to do. A lot of work that has been difficult, because it's removing, the whole reason that the board didn't just go with the reissuing of the bonds at the lower level and not raising taxes, which we've seen as a slam dunk in the community, if there ever was one, is because it does not meet all of our needs. And you went to the community and you said, "What do you think of all of these needs?" And the community said, "We think all of them are important as well." Right? You got the answer from the community in which you asked. The 81.6 million dollar plan, although it does not raise taxes, it clearly does not meet the expected needs of this community. That is why I'm making the recommendation to you that you go with the 136.6. It's beyond the, it's what we need, it reflects the community's values as surveyed in two different measures across the community. I think that is the only responsible plan to bring to the board in March. At that point, the community then has their formal say in that. The board still has given themselves enough time through thoughtful forward thinking to come back in the fall with a smaller plan, should the community not support that larger. You have been responsible in your actions so that it's not a one or nothing with this community, that you can offer them this option of meeting what you've identified as needs, what the staff and students have identified as needs, and now what the community has identified as similar needs, and now ask them to vote for that. And that's why communities have the opportunity to vote in this way. And then if they come out and say, "We don't support that," then it'll be our job to ask similar questions and figure out what comes off, and then come back again with a different plan that perhaps the community would support. So hearing what I've heard tonight, I believe that the board is asking for me to bring an action item on December 18th, for the 136.6 million dollar bond issue to vote on. And should there be enough votes to move forward with that, it would go on the March 20th primary election.
Yes. Can I, yes. Can I make a request, just briefly? Wondering if our students want to perhaps weigh in on this a little bit.
I just had like one question, or I have two questions. One of them was, what would be happening to the people who wouldn't be able to afford the tax increase? Like where would their kids end up going to school, or just what would happen?
Well, their children would, anybody who lives within the district goes to school.
Would just continue going to school. And then just what about like the payments and everything?
So on an average $300,000 home in the community, their taxes would increase by $65.
Okay.
Annual.
Annually, so.
Oh, okay.
So their taxes would go up by $65, and that's where they would sit for this portion of the bonds that make up their taxes. That's where that rate would sit for about the, I always mess this up, 20...
24 years.
24 years is where that would sit.
So $5 a month.
But yeah, if you're on a fixed income, that can be a lot, yeah. And that's why this decision is so difficult for a board to make.
And then like ultimately, is it the board's decision or is it the community's?
So it's the board's decision to put it on the ballot.
Okay.
And then the community gets to voice their opinion through voting in March.
Okay.
It's just what is the community, what does the board believe that the community could support and has requested to be able to vote on?
So it goes on a electorial vote goes up for, as we were voted on to the school board, similar, not you students, but similar to that.
Okay.
Yeah, we get to decide whether or not to ask the question.
Exactly.
And the voters get to decide whether or not to go through with it and do it. Ultimately, it's up to the residents to decide.
So from a student perspective, kind of being students in the school district, curious of your thought from that perspective.
I kind of wonder how it would benefit us educationally. I know that like facilities would improve, I guess, just the atmosphere in the school, but is there anything that would like positively influence us when it comes to education?
Yes, the whole plan, that's a great question, and this is actually what the Citizens Task Force recommendation was, that is, this is communicated from the school district going forward. And remember, if the board does put this on the bond, this bond...
On the ballot.
On the ballot, thank you.
Listen to me.
Thank you. It's very essential that the board and the administration, we just provide information to our community. It's not our job to persuade the community. But they felt, the Citizens Task Force felt, that it was our responsibility to share that story about how learning would be impacted through these changes. And there's key changes, things like learning commons that allow students to freely access the resources that they need that help them throughout the day, whether that be counselors or administrators or the library or those kinds of things. The fact that through this plan, over a period of time, every one of our classroom spaces will improve through upgrades and things like furniture and the learning environment and those kinds of things. The fact that accessibility increases throughout the building and that students and our visitors feel like, even if they aren't able-bodied, that their needs are respected by the facilities that we offer. And most importantly, that our students enter into a safe and secure environment every day, and when they walk through our doors feel like, for the amount of time that they're going to be there, they're safe. All right? So I think all of those things play into, and then, you know, we've talked about equity across the campuses. The fact that whether you go to North or South, you can have the same access to resources and experiences regardless of which of our two campuses that you attend school. I think all of those messages, all of those aspects play into the learning experience for our students. Oh, and then I forgot the other one, air conditioning.
And Hank, Hank, I mean, it's not just anecdotal evidence, there's a lot of studies.
Oh, absolutely.
That say even being educated in an air-conditioned room is better for your education. So it's not just, it's not just comfort, it's not just glitz and glamour. There's a lot of scientific...
There's a lot of scientific data around the things that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Feeling safe at school helps kids learn. Having high-quality air circulation, not just air conditioning, but the air circulation that happens in us. Having access to natural light throughout the day that our learning commons will provide students. All of those things have lots of strong correlation to increased achievement levels in schools. So a lot of evidence that not only does this, this does those things, like improving property values and giving us good schools that people can be proud of, but it creates conditions that make it better for student learning to occur as well, which is the whole reason why we exist here.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're gonna put it on the...
We will be back on December 18th for the board to take a formal vote on whether or not they support, remember, this is, the vote that you will be taking as board members is not whether or not you support the plan, it's whether you support the community having the opportunity to vote on that plan. You as board members and as citizens of District 99 will have your ability to cast your individual ballot as well for the plan itself. But your question as board members is, should the community have the opportunity on the March 20th election to vote yes or no on the 136.6 million dollar plan? Not necessarily whether or not you support that plan, if that makes sense. Should the community have the opportunity to weigh in on that larger plan on March Thank you all for your support in this whole process.
And I would just like to echo again what Don started and say thank you to you, Dr. Theeley, and to Jill, and to, I can't say Mr. and Mrs. Schwartz. Mr. Schwartz.
I wanted to do that, though.
And all of our staff members who pulled this together, to our consultants, to our community that participated. This was a monumental effort and I think we're in a good place, and I'm just really appreciative. It's just like those kids who were doing the, this morning, or this morn...
This morning, that's what it feels like.
A few hours ago. It's all good stuff. Okay, we're gonna move on to our reception of visitors. This is for public comment, this is an opportunity for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Is anybody who wishes to address the board? Are you, oh, I guess he's not coming up to, okay. Here and then, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
I move to eat at dinner.
Terry, do you have a sit, moves?
Second.
Second.
Mike seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
We'll leave six.
For adjourn.